Hello, Pitten County. This is Robert F. Kennedy Jr. Please watch Grassroots TV. This is the voice of democracy.
Welcome, everyone, here. This is a function of the Woody Creek Caucus. We meet the last Thursday of every month. Unfortunately, this month is not considered summer. During the summer, we have a wonderful potluck. It's a good thing to come to and get a square meal, bring a dish. If you come on some evening where we don't have a potluck, we have a wonderful kitchen that has good things all day, every day. Having given a little plug for our community center. Just want to welcome everyone here, especially the candidates. I speak for everyone, I'm sure, when I say we give you our respect and our admiration being in the arena, and it's a wonderful thing at the grassroots level here. So, first one up will be Janice Cardill, and she'll tell us about voter registration.
Hi, welcome, everyone. It's nice to meet you. My name is Janice Wass Cardill, and I'm the Pitten County --
The microphone.
-- microphone. My name is Janice Wass Cardill, and I'm the Pitten County Clerk and Recorder. And I was asked tonight to start us out, to give you some information on voting. And I want to make sure that people are aware that it is a very long ballot this year. It's a two-card ballot, four sides. So, we do have sample ballots online at www.aspenpittin.com. If you click on the icon, the Voto8 icon, it'll take you directly to the website where you can pick up a sample ballot. Study your ballots. You only have 10 to 15 minutes at the polls to vote, so you want to review everything before you go into the polls. Also, I have for you tonight, if you want to take it home, is the issues and the races and the measures, just an outline of what is on the ballot. And I want to also review with you some important dates. October 6th is the last day to register to vote, so that's in another week. Please register to vote. If you've changed your address, you need to update your address as well, because that determines what issues you vote on based on your district. The other thing I want to review with you is there are three ways to vote. So, if you aren't here on November 4th, Election Day, when the polls are open from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 in the evening, you can also early vote in the clerk's -- behind the clerk's office, which is the county commissioner's office, which they graciously give up for a month for us to conduct elections. We're open from 8:30 to 4:30, and that will start October 20th, which is a Monday. And that goes for two weeks before, the weeks before the election on the 4th. That starts the 20th and ends Friday the 31st. So, you also have that opportunity to stop by our office, go into the Board of County Commissioners' room. A lot of people work in Aspen. It's convenient, and we encourage you to do that. We'd love to see you there. The third way to vote is mail-in ballot. It used to be called absentee ballot. You simply have to fill out a form, send it in to us, and we will mail you a ballot. You can vote then conveniently at your kitchen table and take your time to review it. The mail-in ballot application is online again, aspenpittin.com, or you can stop in our office. We have forms there. Or give us a call, and we can mail you one. We will receive our ballots next week. We will be mailing ballots out October 6th. So, just heads up on that. So, those are three ways you can vote: absentee, early voting, and then on Election Day, which is the 4th. So, if there are any other questions from the crowd, that concludes my information. I'll turn it over to Steve to continue.
Is there a cutoff date for absentee ballots?
Absentee ballots, thank you. Absentee ballots, the last day we can mail out an absentee ballot is the 28th of October. It's one week before the election. If you want to stop by our office, the last day we can hand one over to you is Friday the 31st. But all absentee ballots have to be in our office, in the Clerk and Recorder's office, on Election Day before or by 7 o'clock.
So, in other words, it doesn't matter what date of -- it's not a postmarked cutoff?
Right.
It's -- they actually have to be --
They physically have to be in our office by 7 o'clock on November 4th. If we get them afterwards with the postmark, we'll give you credit for voting, but your ballot won't be casted. Well -- It maintains your -- it maintains you as an active voter instead of an inactive voter.
Janice, if they take an absentee ballot or a mail-in ballot, are they -- and choose not to do it, can they still show up at the polls?
Sure, they can still show up at the polls. What will happen is, on the register, it'll show that you have an absentee ballot. So, what the judges will do is allow you to vote provisional. You simply vote the same ballot as anyone else does, but you put it in an envelope, because in our office, we have to check all absentee ballots before we then go on to the provisionals. And if it shows that we haven't received your absentee ballot, then we would accept your provisional ballot, but you have to go through that process. But you do have the option. If you order an absentee ballot, you can early vote, or you can still vote at the polls.
If you're moving during this interim period within the district, your P.O. box is the same. And I'm only talking about a Part 5. So, not worry about it.
If you are moving, what's important is your physical residence. If you move after 30 days before the election, you will vote in your old -- you will use your old address. If you move before 30 days from the election --
It'll be after.
-- you will use that address. So, that's the determination, is where were you 30 days before the election? So, that'll determine where you vote. And if you're in the same district, then we care.
Janice, if somebody has never registered to vote, how do they do that?
If you've never registered to vote, you have -- there's three ways. You can go online to --
Voto8.
Okay, and it is on the election page. It takes you straight to it. The form is called a combination voter registration and mail-in ballot application. It's convenient, one form for both. The other thing you can do is stop by our office, fill out a form, hand it right in. Or, if you can't make it in, and you don't have a computer at your access, call. We'll mail it to you. You need to get that to us and postmarked by the 6th.
So, do you need to come physically in and be identified, or anything?
When you come in, when you fill out that -- if you're registering to vote for the first time, what's on the application is you have to provide either a driver's license number, or if you don't have a driver's license, you can put down your last four social security numbers. So, those are the two things that identify you. Unlike when you go to the polls, you have to identify that you are a resident of Pitten County. And you can use the identification, which is outlined in law. A lot of people use a driver's license, a passport, things like that. There's one other thing I wanted to mention, is if you request an absentee ballot, a new feature that is offered with our new voter registration system, our statewide system, you can go online to voto8-aspenpittincounty.com, and it takes you to our election page, where you can go into the statewide voter registration by simply entering your name, and it has to be exactly how you're registered, your birthday, your zip code. It'll give you all the information about what districts you vote on. Your residence will be in there, your mailing address if it's different. But also, if you requested an absentee ballot, it will tell you the status. Is it pending? Did we send it? Have we received it? So, it's a great way to track and verify if we got your absentee ballot back. Any other questions?
Just explain, even though we have three districts up here that people are running from that we can vote at large?
Absolutely. You can vote at large. Anyone in Pitten County will be voting for District 3, District 4, and District 5. And there are two candidates for each. I'm glad to ask that. I can't tell you how many people are confused.
They think because they live in District 3, they have to vote for only District 3. You can vote for any or all districts.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
We can quickly do a quick introduction of the candidates here. I'm just going to run down the line and let you introduce yourselves at greater depth later. We have George Newman and Dee Malone from District 5, Bruce Anderson and Jack Hatfield from District 4, and Shelley Roy and Mike Aliceley from District 3. I guess, are we ready for introductions?
So, we have Patty Glaber and other Pitten County Commissioners escaping me.
They are not running.
They're not? Oh, right, in District 1 and 2.
And isn't that her seat, Dorothy Newman?
Yes, yes.
Dorothy is undone by term limits, right? But Patty is an incumbent that doesn't -- is not facing --
And Rachel are not up for election this cycle. They're two years.
Two years from now. Wonderful.
And will the timer give us a little heads up, 30 seconds before, or whatever?
I will give you 30 seconds prior to your two minutes.
With the five minutes for the introduction.
Five minutes for introduction, and I'll give you 30 seconds before your time is up. Is that okay with everyone?
If you don't need a full five minutes, that's fine.
That's fine.
So, shall we just go from right to left? George, you want to be first one up? You're welcome.
Hi, I'm George Newman. I'm running for the 5th district seat, which is the Down Valley Seat. For those who want to find about my campaign further, or want to get involved in my campaign, my website is georgenewmanforpittencounty.com. I'm a 35-year resident of Pitten County, lived in Emma for the last 30 years. My wife Liz is a designated real estate appraiser with an office in Basalt. My daughter Cassie was born and raised here, went through the Basalt School System, and now lives in New York City. I'm currently a travel professional at ski.com. My campaign platform, preserve, conserve, and collaborate, speaks not only to my concerns about the county and the valley, but also my ability to address those issues. I want to preserve the rural and historic character of Pitten County. I've worked with and supported the open space, board, and trails in their ability to put two large ranches under conservation easements in Emma and most recently supported their efforts in the purchase of the historic Emma Townsite. I want to conserve our natural resources, protect our public lands, and provide access and extend our opportunities for our citizens to enjoy our open space and trail program. As an outdoor educator and professional guide for over 10 years, I instilled in my students, my staff, and my clients the concept of being a good steward of the land. I gave them conservation values and wilderness ethics. Also, as a board member for the Aspen Snowmass Nordic Council in its early years, I helped build that trail and promote it to now what we have is really the largest free trail in the country for Nordic skiing. I'm really proud of that. My -- our success as a community and as a valley, I believe, lies not so much in government as it does in collaborative governance, citizen involvement, collaborative problem-solving, and consensus-based decision-making. These are principles and concepts I've used throughout my professional career and in all my work in the community, establishing two community-based nonprofit organizations, Leadership Aspen and the Emma Caucus. As a past president of the Aspen Childcare Center, I served on the task force that provided a steady source of funding for childcare in Aspen. That actually is coming up for a revote on a ballot for an extension. Half that money goes to childcare, half goes to affordable housing. I also serve as a committee member to the Healthy Communities Initiative. We got a grant, a three-year grant, to provide education in our community and in our schools on the issues of drug and substance abuse. And as a facilitator for the Aspen Area Comprehensive Plan, back in the early '90s, working with two task forces, the energy and the transportation, I was directly involved in setting up the Aspen Crosstown Shuttle and from the Energy Department, the Energy Committee established the organization core. I'm a founding member, nine-year director, and past president of Leadership Aspen, now called Roaring Fork Leadership. It's in its 21st year, with over 500 alumni working actively in our community, using the skills and concepts that they learned in that program. They are helping us in so many ways, in the nonprofit organizations they serve on, and also as elected officials. I'm also a founding member and the chairperson of the Emma Caucus. Like you, we realize the importance of a neighborhood caucus and being able to help determine the future of our neighborhoods. We've just finished our master plan, and a lot of the issues and concerns that we face, I feel, are really a microcosm of the issues that the county is facing. I bring a lot of background in terms of outdoor education, working with resort associations, and in the ski industry. So, I understand the needs and the balance of the needs, of the balance of the resort community and the community at large. I have proven my success in leading organizations, working with a diverse group of people on a myriad of issues. And my community involvement --
30 seconds, George.
-- and a broad-based community involvement. Given all that, my leadership, my judgment, and my experience, I believe I will be an effective commissioner on your behalf. I thank you for your support and your vote.
Thank you, George. Next up, Dee.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dee Malone, and I'm running for Pitten County Commissioner from District 5. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, and then afterwards, if we have time, I'd like to let you answer any questions that you might have of me. I was raised by a Nebraska farm family, raised by my grandparents, who instilled in me values that have carried me through to today, including an appreciation for the importance of community, that we can do more as a community than we ever could as individuals, the importance of giving back to our community, a land ethic that includes especially nurturing the land that provides us with everything that we have, and the value and appreciation of education. I have a bachelor's of science degree in biology, a master's of science degree in education, and a master's of science degree in environmental science. And I've used my education to pursue my passions, which are conservation and connecting people with their environment. I've taught high school biology, and I've taught biology at Colorado Mountain College. And I've led ecology hikes for Rocky Mountain Nature Association. In the valley, I've, as far as volunteer activities, I've been on the Aspen Center for Environmental Studies for two terms. I was on the Independence Pass Foundation for 10 years, and our project there was restoration for the safety and the ecological integrity of the Independence Pass. And I am currently on the Roaring Fork Audubon Society Board. I've also conducted numerous environmental assessments of birds, plants, animals, and most recently, stream and habitat assessment of the Roaring Fork watershed. And that information is being used to build the watershed management plan, where we are managing, are seeking to conserve and manage water resources in the Roaring Fork Valley. That plan is being led by the Roaring Fork Conservancy. I'm running for county commissioner because I believe that Pitten County has the potential to be a leader in sustainability. And I believe that I have the expertise and leadership skills to help guide us in that direction. I also believe that our quality of life, that so many of us are here for, is being impacted by an ever-growing human population. I know, as an environmental scientist, that we can do things to mitigate those impacts by combining community involvement and community values with best available science and technology. I think it's also crucial that, as county commissioners, we realize that different communities have different values. Your quality of life means something different to you than the quality of life in another community. And as county commissioner, I need to respect and abide by those values. I believe that a healthy environment is what provides us with a healthy community. I believe that our air quality needs to be protected. We can do that with effective monitoring and more stringent air quality standards. I believe that western water should stay on the western slope for agriculture and for our communities. Wilderness is our legacy, and I believe that we need more of it. And I strongly advocate for more wilderness as designated by the Wilderness Workshops Plan to identify wilderness gems. Agriculture is a defining characteristic of development in the West. And I believe that we need to promote and enhance sustainable agriculture as a way of life. Roads connect communities and connect individuals, and we need to maintain them safely, but we also need to maintain them in a sustainable way. All of these issues will require hard decisions. And I believe that we need to combine community values with good science and technology to arrive at sustainable decisions for the long-term future of our entire community. I believe I have the leadership skills, the expertise, and the vision to guide us in that direction. Thank you, and please vote for me.
Thank you, Dee. Bruce, take it away.
Hello, my name is Bruce Anderson. I'm running for county commissioner in District 4. I was born and raised in a little town in Massachusetts. Went to public schools there, went to college in Cambridge. After earning degrees in electrical engineering and industrial management, went out to join Hewlett-Packard in Palo Alto, California as a design engineer. I came to Aspen in October '71, so we're coming right up on 37 years here. And that's a decision that I certainly don't regret. I worked in the resort business jobs for a number of years, but got back into my field in late '73, early '74 by starting a computer software consulting company. Ironically, my first client was the city of Aspen, and my second was Pitten County. I worked with both of those organizations for more than 15 years. And that business has grown to include over 120, both public and private sector, clients up and down the valley, as well as some out of the valley. I met my wife Laura, who's here tonight, in the late '70s. And we had a daughter in 1982 and a son in 1984 at Aspen Valley. And they came up through the Aspen School System, so I have a pretty good appreciation for how great that system is. I think most of you have probably had similar experiences and know how important it is to address issues, to keep that system as strong as possible. I've got a lot of experience work-wise that kind of plays a role toward making decisions in the commission environment, and then I've dealt with many, many different people over time and had to bring them together. I've got a lot of community involvement in both the school system and through the ski club, through other homeowners' associations. And that brings a skill set that I think is valuable in the job that I'm seeking. I think my love of the valley and my desire to preserve the quality we have is giving a passion to get involved in this job. I've not been a public officer before, as most of you will probably know. And I don't think that necessarily precludes my doing an excellent job on your behalf. There are a number of issues that are facing the county, and they aren't going to be easy to solve. Obviously, you know, things like housing, things like employee retention are key issues. I think it's critical that Pitten County take a leadership role in moving us all toward more renewable energy. And there are a number of things we can do, both through code stuff, through lobbying on a level outside the county, but also in terms of enhancing the recycling and even energy producing through biofuels production can be done and can be done successfully here. I'd very much like to be involved in this whole process. I've got the energy, and I'd love to be involved in this. I'm asking for your vote, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Jack?
Thank you all for inviting us tonight. Really appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Jack Hatfield here. I've lived here 36 years. Came here, like many of you all, for the winter, stayed for the summer, never left. I very much appreciate what I consider the Pitten County values, the things that link us together, the things that keep us here, the things that make this a unique, independent, and actually progressive county. And when, as an elected official, you have an opportunity to network in various levels, in the state and federal communities, you understand that Pitten County is very progressive. I have spent considerable amount of time as a public servant, two and a half years on the Pitten County Planning and Zoning Commission, six years on the So Mass Town Council, 10 years on the So Mass Water and Sand Board, and finishing up eight years as a District 4 County Commissioner. We have multiple issues that we deal with. Growth, of course, is something that we take for granted as far as the management of it. It's quite a challenge to make sure that we preserve our quality of life and the quality of the land. We recently did a survey, and that survey statistically valid indicated that 99% of the people in Pitten County feel that we have either a good or very good quality of life. And I'm pleased and proud to represent all of you all as a commissioner, to be able to continue that. I consider myself not a special commissioner, just one on a long line of good commissioners. We've had a bunch of good commissioners before I ever got here. We face challenges, Pitten County, and regardless of whether it's this year or next year, the financial challenge is always there. There's just no question that there are always more needs than dollars. And I sincerely consider myself, and my board certainly knows that I'm a fiscal conservative. I really want to make sure that we get bang for our buck at every opportunity. And I think Pitten County and the survey said about 68% of the people felt that we spend your tax dollars either good or very good. As far as my personal involvement, I'm pleased to say that I have been representing the county at Colorado Counties Incorporated, a statewide lobbying organization where all the commissioners go to Denver and work with the state legislature. I represent us on the Natural Resources and Ag Committee, the Land Use Committee, the Taxation Committee, and the General Government Committee. I feel that when you look at the job that we do, it's fraught with challenges, but it really is a job that you can take to heart. There are so many opportunities to do more than just go to meetings, and we sure go to plenty of those, as some of our members of our community certainly know, like Paul, who is a member of the Planning Commission. He -- thank you for being a volunteer. But the other things, the things that link us again together, like volunteering for the Race for the Cure, like helping with the disabled vets when they fly in those two weekends, and going to the airport and spending all day doing what we can to make sure that they're comfortable and know that we care. These are all kind of secondary things to the bigger job, but integral to be involved out there more than just, again, that meeting thing. We have another challenge, and we all talk about it. And Pitten County is a bit behind the eight ball, and that's about affordable housing. I have, in each jurisdiction that I've been elected --
15 seconds, Jack.
15.
-- been elected, I've built housing in every jurisdiction at the appropriate places and not in the rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
I thought that we had a disadvantage to be -- or an advantage, but --
I thought that we had a disadvantage to be, or an advantage, but there's so many butterflies now that I now know you want to start at that end.
You'll get the first questions, though, Shelley.
Just a quick update. I have lived here thirty-three years. I'm very proud to announce that my daughter just began her first job. She completed her master's in education, her undergraduate's in biology, and she is teaching at an elementary school in Denver. And her husband will be, has, against my advice, has chosen to be a family practitioner in spite of the $230,000 debt that he will begin his life with, which will lead me to why I'm running for office. And the second thing is, my son, the jury is still out. He is in his second year in theater at University of Mississippi, and he goes up to Memphis often to play in a band. And that is what motivated me to run for office. And I have to admit that part of my drive is because of where I live. I live about two miles west of the roundabout, and the impacts that are occurring there that are the result of Aspen's very aggressive agenda are harming us, and they're negatively impacting us. Also, I live, I work in an office where there are fifteen people under the age of thirty-two, and I listen to what they are going through, and it has always been hard to live here. Do you all remember when we first came here, people said, "Well, have you paid your dues?" These kids are more than paying their dues. They, they're leaving, and that's why I'm running. I don't think, we built an incredible environmental community here. We have, as Jack and everybody has alluded to, one of the highest qualities of life, but we are not going to be sustainable. We are only going to be people who are retired or second homeowners. And I want to retire here, but I want, when I go to the hospital, that there's a nurse there. I want, I live at North Forty. I want there to be kids playing in the streets and to be enjoying the environment that we have created. And if we can't have schoolteachers here, and if we can't have nurses, or people at the restaurants, or people to come plow my driveway when I'm too old to do it myself, and last year I thought I was, then we don't have a sustainable community. And I think it won't take much to achieve that. And just, you know, I've hit a couple of them, and everybody is working on building affordable housing, but another thing we have to concentrate on is we have to have affordable rental housing as well. We also, and to give them a chance to get into our communities and see where they want to be, we have to address the entrance to Aspen. We can't continue anymore. You guys, our first vote was in nineteen sixty-nine. The traffic right now where I live, there are days I cannot turn out of the ABC to go anywhere if I have to drive. And it doesn't matter if it's ten in the morning, noon, or four o'clock. And what I hear from the kids who are working in my office is, it is so hard for them. We have made it too hard for them to be here. That's the main reason I'm running, and I have a list of things that I would like to accomplish. If I'm elected, I'm going to take it as a mandate, and I'm going to push really hard to do it. In the years that I was as a county commissioner, I established I have a lot of contacts in the state. After I left office, in fact, I went and testified in front of the State Senate, and they had been trying to change bicycle laws for four years, and I was successful in doing that. By the way, you all might remember, I was run over by a car on a crosswalk. Well, I was considered at fault, because in the state of Colorado, if you are in a crosswalk, you mounted on a bicycle, you were at fault. You now can be, you know, in a crosswalk on a bicycle. Is my timer up?
One more minute.
Anyway, you don't need to hear any more from me. Oh, one last thing. Even out of office, I was able to deliver Smuggler Mountain into open space, and one of my proudest things was a project I started years ago, which was to put the Ryan parcel, which is up by Pine Creek Cookhouse, into open space, is almost completed now. It took ten years, and thank God the board took over and kept the ball moving on that. Anyway, you don't need to hear any more from me. Michael, you're up.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Being in this caucus room reminds me of the first time I was in a caucus, I think it was nineteen seventy-five, with the Woody Creek Caucus. Wink Jaffe was there, George was there, George is still here. It seems like just yesterday. The issues were similar. They were about growth, they were about the prop challenges that the county was facing. Not much has changed. We're facing challenges today, too. I've lived here for a very long time. My wife has lived here for an even longer time. Her family's owned property in Woody Creek for fifty years. We have a real affinity for where we live, as everyone does. It's something we love and cherish. And we, the reason I ran was that I wanted to continue that feeling of love and cherish for our county. Shelley mentioned that she had gotten open space, Smuggler into open space. Let's set the record straight. Smuggler became open space while I was in office, not Shelley. Shelley was the broker for the property. She took, she took those years that she was in office, those years of executive session, those years of confidential information, and flipped it to the other side. For her to, for her to try to get credit for Smuggler is just ridiculous. It just won't fly. It was a breach of public trust to, on the one hand, be in those executive sessions, be in negotiations with the county, and then flop over for the client. Take all that information, all that negotiation, all that confidential information, and try to claim that she was instrumental in getting open space. One minute? Three minutes? Two minutes?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. So I just want to set the record straight. I mean, I'm really involved in the truth. Shelley isn't. It's virtually impossible to get the truth out of Shelley. It's impossible. Everything is a distortion. All of her comments about me are what I think, what he does. There's not one quote in there. There's not one actual fact shred of evidence, if that's the way I think. This flyer that she circulated is full of half-truths, untruths, and exaggerations. And I don't think we deserve that as a county. I think what we need is straight shooting, telling the truth, dealing with the issues, and that's something I can do and something I've proven in the last few, four years. Thank you.
I'm not going to ignore the hand for now, unless it's urgent, someone's bleeding. What I will do now, we have a series of questions, and since George went up first, this end of the table will be coming up last. We'll go right down the aisle in order, so, and in pairs. Mike and Shelley, Jack and Bruce, Dee and George. And if you are the first person to answer the first question, you will be the second person to answer the second question. If I somehow flub it up, remind me. So my colleague on my left, Phil Holstein, was instrumental in wordsmithing some of these questions. So actually, Mike, you will be first up, and then Shelley, as a pair, and as I said, we'll continue down. The first question, "Do you support the urban growth boundary with regard to employee housing? And what is your position on the preservation of the character of the community outside the urban growth boundary?" And you will have two minutes to answer.
I suppose you mean, do you support keeping employee housing within the urban growth boundary? I do. I think it's important to do that primarily because employee housing needs to be where the services are, and the services are either in Aspen, or Basalt, Carbondale. They're not in between here. This is a fine institution, but there's no services here for people. If you live here, you're going somewhere. You're going to go shopping, and you're probably going to not walk to go get your groceries from a place like Woody Creek, you're going to get in a car. In fact, in the off-season, you're definitely going to get in a car. So I do support that, and I think it's appropriate. It's also appropriate to have those dense urban areas have a place to go, to enjoy the country, to have it right outside their door, so you can get on your bike, and just within a mile, you're essentially in the country. And I think that is really one of the most attractive things about Picken County. One minute left?
One minute left.
And I think, so therefore, I'm all in favor of what the county really does best, which is the acquisition of open space and the preservation of open space. That is a symbiotic relationship with the urban areas, and it works out very well. It's not without struggle, but it works out very well. And it also works out for the tourist. The tourist doesn't want to come to a valley that's essentially clogged and sprawl, they want to come to a valley that has a vibrant urban center and a marvelous countryside, and that's why they're here, and I support that.
Thank you, Mike.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Gladly.
Could someone turn down that wind that's coming this way? It's really cold. You're feeling it, too, yeah.
Here's the question, Shelley.
Thank you.
"Do you support the urban growth boundary with regard to employee housing? And what is your position on the preservation of the character of the community outside of the urban growth boundary?"
I think I will go with Michael's answer on the preservation. He articulated it well. What you have hit, though, is one of the key issues that comes to where my platform is. And there, I absolutely support the concept that ninety-nine percent of our development should occur within our urban growth boundaries. On the other hand, there are some sites within the county that could accept affordable housing. The county, for instance, owns three affordable lots at the base, right at the end of Cozy Point, that are walking distance to a bus. They're currently on the market to be sold as free-market lots. Again, I'm going back to, and I started mentioning my son-in-law. Aspen desperately needs a family health practitioner or other physicians there. They are required to live within a certain distance of the hospital. Utilizing that particular site that has three lots could address some of those needs for the hospital or for the school. So in my perspective is, unlike where the board currently stands, and this is a change that has occurred in the last four years. Four years ago, a certain amount of affordable housing was accepted outside of the urban growth boundary in very minor, you know, one or two homes, thank you, if they were right near a bus stop. And I would continue to support that, and the county now takes the position that it's a black and white, it's an absolute firm border. And I think I can say it really quick. What they're running up against is the city of Aspen is saying, "No more development in the city of Aspen." Basalt is saying, "We don't want any more development." Carbondale is saying, "We don't want any more development." And if we are going to have another generation, we have to open up that conversation again.
Thank you, Shelley. Jack, would you like the question again, Jack?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Well, this is one of the real easy questions. I hope they're all this easy. Absolutely, I support the urban growth boundary. It was one of my platforms eight years ago, or almost eight years ago, when I ran. I ran to preserve the rural character of the county. It's so critical. We can either be like Eagle or Garfield County, or we can be like Picken County. When you drive in here where the Grange Ranch is, you know you're in Picken County. It's very critical that we preserve this. We face challenges, but I think through cooperation, we can face that challenge of housing and still be able to identify sites and build within the urban growth boundary. I believe if the facts, my facts are correct, when I got on the board, I was helpful and instrumental in actually establishing formally that urban growth boundary, because it wasn't a formal policy of the county. I believe that we have three tools to ensure that this continues. One, of course, is our land use code and the policies of the county. Two is our open space program, which is instrumental, and you all deserve the credit for voting for, I think, three times now for that open space. And the third one is TDRs, which in nineteen ninety-three, when I was on P and Z, Planning Commission, I helped create the TDR program in rural remote zoning. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Bruce?
Phil, you got a question that you probably will find agreement up and down the line here. Yes, I very strongly support the urban growth boundary. I think I'm in very strong agreement with Michael on this. There's a need for housing, we all know it, but the sensible place for it to be is close to where those people are going to be working. And at the same time, if we're going to preserve the character of this county, you just can't have that sprawl. And so there is the symbiotic relationship between the strong open space program that we have in Picken County and preserving that space and preserving public access to that space is also very important. Continuing to develop the trails is a benefit for all of us that live here, as well as the people that come and enjoy the place. To start to encroach in these rural valleys, whatever the motive, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to say, "Well, gee, we need, we need more teachers, we've got to have housing." But that housing should still not compromise the values that everyone, including the teachers, are interested in seeing. I mentioned that one, just because that's a current issue, and that may even have, you know, been in the back of Phil's mind when he formed the question or chose the question. It's going to be a tough one, and I'd be the first one to support the fact that critical jobs need housing for critical people. But who's going to be the one that says a teacher's more important than a sheriff's deputy is more important than a firefighter? Can't go there. So what we have to do is develop the housing that's available to all of those people and develop it close to where those jobs are. I would love to see a discussion among the county, the school system, and perhaps Rafta to relocate that huge facility they have for maintenance and buses at the school and instead put housing there.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Dee, you're up.
Thank you. I am strongly in support of affordable housing, but I am equally as strongly in support of keeping that housing where the employees live, within the urban growth boundary. To sprawl out beyond the urban growth boundary destroys the very thing that supports our quality of life. I was one of the few, when I ran for city council, that was against Burlingame. But I was against Burlingame, not because I'm against affordable housing, I'm against, I was against Burlingame because of the economics of it and because it contributes to sprawl and it contributes to traffic congestion. Our agricultural and rural areas are a jewel, and we, I believe, we have to preserve those, and we have to be so careful about not destroying the very character of those areas. We should be promoting and enhancing the ability to, and encouraging sustainable agriculture. And when we sprawl out into those rural areas, we are undermining the very thing that so many people come here to enjoy, whether it's just driving through or whether it's walking through. Maintaining those rural areas also contributes immensely to environmental health by absorbing water and creating, being able to absorb the carbon dioxide that's making our climate change. So, character of the area and environmental sustainability dictates to me that we should respect the urban growth boundary, respect the caucuses. According to the Woody Creek Caucus Master Plan and the Capital Creek Caucus Plan and so on, their agriculture is very important. We should respect that and value that.
Perfect. One last second. George?
I also support the concept that we need to keep the affordable housing in our urban boundary areas. I look at it, I call it smart growth. Smart growth is, means that the housing needs to be built where there are services, there is public mass transit, and it does not impact any further on the environment. Also have to realize that as important as employee housing is, it's still growth, and we need to consider what are the environmental impacts, the social impacts, and the economic impacts that will have on our community and our valley. Keeping it within the urban boundary certainly helps address a lot of those issues. Keeping it within the urban boundary certainly helps address a lot of those issues. My platform, again, the reason I'm running is because I want to preserve the rural character of Pickin County. This is something that we, myself and the Emma Caucus, has pursued vigorously over the last six years, five, six years since we first started the caucus. It's critical for us to protect our environment and sustainability. Again, working with the open space, trails and boards, we've supported their efforts to put two large ranches under conservation easements in Emma. We need to continue that. I see that we can use our land use as a tool to protect our environment and our rural character. It's a mechanism that we should be working more closely on.
Thanks, George. For the second question, District Four will be first up. We'll flip the order, which you answered, and continue in that likely, like manner. Question number two is, do you think the county has a role in the solution to the entrance to Aspen? And what would that role be? And Bruce, you're up first.
For all of us who've lived here a long time, we know there've been many, many votes and many discussions about the entrance to Aspen, and it seems like something that's dragged on forever. I do think it's primarily something that the city's going to have to address because it's their access. I don't really think the county, other than reminding the city that, obviously, this is a problem, it's a problem for all of us, access to and from the town for you folks who live here, things that Shelley talked about, even closer in, you can't get in and out of town. Clearly, that problem has to be addressed. I'm really hopeful that it will be very soon, but frankly, I don't see that as a major priority for the Pickin County Commission.
Thank you, Bruce.
I believe the role of Pickin County in the entrance to Aspen is one of collaboration. Unfortunately, though, the final decision due to state law and the state's ownership of certain properties, the vote has to come in Aspen. And so, quite frankly, the initiation of a solution, you know, after, I mean, how many years of votes and efforts and meetings, et cetera, we're still studying it. The city council, the current city council, has decided to look at the split shot and try to figure out, well, maybe this is a different option than the approved EIS and recorded decision. But still, we're still studying it. I truly would participate and can continue to work on the Aspen Area Community Plan with the rest of the board and the community. That's also an ongoing process, and that helps define character, et cetera. And that's one of the major issues in Aspen is about the character of Aspen. As a commissioner, just last year, from the first meeting of the year, nine months, I repeatedly talked about the entrance to Aspen. And we could not actually get any more momentum because the reality is, the decision lies in the city of Aspen. So collaboration is something that we would certainly support as commissioners. Thank you.
George?
Is it complicated now?
You're in charge. Is there a square dance caller in the house?
I didn't just randomly pick my platform, preserve, conserve, and collaborate. I really thought about what I really wanted to do as a commissioner and the skills that I have that I can be effective as a commissioner. Successful communities know that we have to work collaboratively with one another. We have to involve the citizens, we have to try to build consensus, we have to work collectively. This issue to the entrance to Aspen is certainly in the jurisdiction of the city of Aspen, but it impacts all of us who drive the highway in and out every day. It impacts our tourism and our sales taxes that we derive from that. We must be working more closely with the city in conjunction with other citizens to try to address this issue. We also should be supporting Rafta and their new tax initiative because we need to encourage more people to use public transportation. That's going to be one immediate, short-term solution to start to alleviate the congestion coming in and out of town. And I think that's critical, and not only for us, but for the entire valley. We're all in this together.
Thank you, George.
I think it's essential to look at any issue or problem holistically. Look at the short-term impacts as well as the long-term impacts. Look at the economic impacts, the environmental impacts, the whole picture. So, as a commissioner, I think that we are intimately involved in the entrance to Aspen issue, even though they may not want us to be or may not be allowed to be. But it's a valley-wide issue, and we need to address the entire problem, not just the Band-Aid, which is the entrance to Aspen. The entire problem has to do with transportation. So I think it's important to look at what the community wants, but not just what the community wants. That's only half of the problem. We have to look at what science and technology provides for us. And we took, we take those two, at least those two aspects of any issue, and we put those together. So we use science and technology, we look at what the community values and what they need, and we move forward with the solution and determine, determined by our goals. Mass transportation needs to be enhanced.
You have one minute.
And we need to be working not just with the city of Aspen, but we need to be working with Garfield County, we need to be working with Rafta, and we need to be working with Eagle County even, and Basalt, and all of those towns. But we need to be looking at what technology provides us and what the impacts are and are not if we don't avail ourselves of those technologies. So I think that when we put the two of those together and we think long-term, we get a viable solution. Thank you.
Shelley, you're next.
I remember the first time I came here, you guys were still mad at me about the paid parking. I was on that original 12. I've been chasing this transportation issue for about 18 years. Why the entrance of Aspen doesn't work is there is almost 28,000 people when everybody is in residence between Snowmass and Aspen. You can't move from these two communities and push them all through two lanes. And that's the first conversation I would like to have again with the city. As to where the county's participation is, the county four-laned Highway 82, paid to have it four-laned, remember the used acts from Shale Bluffs up to, I think about where the current roundabout is, I'm not sure where it ended, maybe it was Buttermilk. The county was also instrumental in pushing through the roundabout and getting the funding, putting forth, putting up the funding and then being reimbursed by CDOT. The county was instrumental in building the current new bridge. And in fact, when the city and county were arguing about that, the county commissioners finally said, it's going to, because the city wanted us to build a two-lane bridge, the county commissioner said, it's going to be four-lane, and you can put the stripes wherever you want it. There was a moment there where I was afraid they were really going to do that and just put it as two lanes. And they went ahead and put the bus lane through. The county can be a player here, and the vote that everybody keeps talking about is not a vote on whether we can have a direct alignment or a straight shot or a split shot. The vote is regarding the use of the more open space. And I am not positive, I've got to admit, I don't, my brain is doing a little...
Thirty seconds.
Okay, my brain is going flat a little bit, but I know that when I was still in office, the county had a countywide vote on this issue. And at that time, we barely lost because the county commissioners didn't try to push it or talk why we were going there because we thought it was a slam dunk. I think that is time for the commissioners to step forward and try to provide some leadership in breaking this juggernaut that we are all holding currently.
Thank you. Perfect timing, Shelley.
Thank you. I'll have a bad question.
Yeah, you know, it's an internising fight in the city, and quite frankly, they're sort of eating each other up. They're chewing on each other's arms and chewing on each other's legs, depending on their viewpoint. And it's unfortunate, and it's unfortunate they've come to this kind of deadlock. I'd be perfectly willing to offer the good offices of the county to help resolve those issues in whatever way we can. Certainly, we paid for all the engineering funds for the Maroon Creek Bridge, and when they came up short on their actual amount that the CDOT could raise for the bridge, the county commissioners kicked in $900,000 of one-time funds to help support the construction of that bridge. I think that's been successful. It took a long time, but it's a bridge that's going to last at least as long as the original bridge did, it was 124 years or something. So, it's a tough issue, it's really about Aspen's survival. Aspen has to decide itself whether it wants to survive as a premier, first-class resort that is inviting and attractive to people. And currently, with the entrance, it's starting to lose ground very fast. And certainly, the commissioners are worried about it, concerned about it, and are willing to do whatever they can.
Thank you, Mike. Everyone can take a deep breath here. Shelley, Gail or Dana, do you want to, we have some seats inside, are you okay? Question number three, we'll start with George and Dee. You'll be up first, and it kind of flip-flops. Can we pass the, can we pass the mic? Mike? Please, please. Dee. The Pickin County Home Rule Charter mandates the grassroots participation of caucuses. What is your view of the role of the caucuses in county government?
Caucuses provide the county with an essential, vital viewpoint as to how that particular community wants to move forward and how they want their community to evolve. So, my view is that the caucus is essential to county government, especially in rural areas where, and in Pickin County, where we have such disparate sorts of communities. We have Thomasville and Meredith, we have Redstone, we have east of Aspen. And all of those communities have different views about what they want, what means quality of life to them. And I think it's essential that, and the government, at the state level, provides the ability for each of those communities to be a player determining their own future. So I think the caucus system is central to making, especially counties with such so much rural nature as ours does, is central in making the county work. So the caucus system is essential. I believe that the county commissioners need to respect and value the master plans that each caucus puts together, and they need to be intimately, the commissioners need to be intimately involved with the caucus. Thank you.
Caucuses are, caucuses, neighborhood caucuses are one of the real privileges, one of the real joys of being able to be as part of a home rule charter. There's only three counties in a state, I believe, that are home rule charter. All other counties do not recognize caucuses. A caucus is an advisory group. It looks at land use applications for their neighborhood, and it comments to the appropriate planning or elected officials. It's a whole concept of bottom-up, of citizen involvement, citizens being involved in the process. It allows that democratic process. You know, democratic process is much more than just going out and voting on November 4th. It's taken responsibility to be involved in your community. Caucuses allow that to happen. I started the Emma Caucus. I felt it was critical for us as a neighborhood to have the availability to provide input in terms of the direction we want to see our neighborhood go. And we've been very successful in that. We've had to not only go before Pickin County Commissioners on land use applications, but also Eagle County, since Eagle County, Pickin County runs right down the line of the Emma I would like to see, if I'm a commissioner, to bring the caucuses together, at least on a semi-annual basis, and have them come together and discuss common issues. I think there's strength in numbers, and there's a lot of commonalities, and I think caucuses can have a strong impact on the future direction, not only of the county, but hopefully on the valley, to get more people involved. We need to get that involvement.
Thanks, George. Can we pass the mic to Mr. Owsley?
Dr. Mike?
Maybe we need to take up a collection for grassroots activities. We do.
I think we're caught, we're caught on something. Sorry.
Thanks, yeah, I mean, you know, for me, it's obvious that the caucus system works. It's, as I said before, my first caucus meeting was in 1975, and it's what's helped Woody Creek retain its character. I think without a caucus, Woody Creek wouldn't retain its character. I've been criticized for only listening to Woody Creek. It's not true. When the Castle Creek brouhaha about the trail started, I was the only commissioner who said, let's put this off for six months. I'm listening to that caucus. I said, let's put it off. This is obviously too much stress, too much controversy for that caucus, and we'll just simply put off building that trail. It didn't happen, much to my regret, but all the caucuses mean something to me, every single one. That's what makes it so valuable. The voices are all different, but I think many of the goals are the same, and it's really to keep the character of those caucus areas intact. And without those caucuses, it would be steamrolled over. We would not have the kind of unique character of the frying pan, Snowmass Capital Creek, Castle Creek, Woody Creek. It's really a treasure, and I appreciate all of you coming tonight to participate in essentially a caucus meeting. Thanks.
I'm currently working on trying to get a caucus formed for, I think, the last area of Pickin County that doesn't have one, my neighborhood. ABC does not have one. My impression is the caucuses are completely underutilized by the county commissioners, as is the planning and zoning. When you watch what the county commissioners do, you have, an application goes through staff, it goes to the caucus, it goes through then the planning and zoning, and then the county commissioners go back and review everything over again. What I would like to see, and if I am successfully elected, I would like to put the county commissioners' focus on trying to keep a better liaison with the caucuses and incorporating where the caucuses want things to go into the code, rather than becoming another overview of what already three prior groups have already talked ad nauseam about.
Jack, you're up.
Well, I'm certainly supportive of the caucus process. The Home Rule Charter allows us that, and it is one of the reasons why I believe we are a progressive county. I can remember going back to when I was a councilman in Snowmass, I helped initiate the Al Creek Caucus. Whoever heard of the Al Creek Caucus? You know, it just shows the value, I knew that a long time ago. The important thing that comes out, or element that comes out of the caucus system, is the recommendations, and it's not only about land use, it's about open space, it's about projects the county's doing. The caucuses are pretty much in drainages, but overall, the caucus members, even though there's much diversity, we are all linked together as a county through our values and the reason why we're here. I, as an individual commissioner...
I, as an individual commissioner, very much look forward. When I start to look at a land use application, for example, I get deep into finding out who has been referred. For example, when I was in planning and zoning, when the landfill was going to have a new master plan, a new road run right up from Aspen Village, when I noticed that the Woody Creek Caucus had not been referred, this goes back to 1993, I requested that we table that, and it was tabled.
Thirty seconds, Jack.
So there's... My record is very much one that speaks for itself. I support, appreciate, and certainly will continue to do that concerning the caucus system.
Thank you, Jack. We talked earlier about urban growth boundaries and, I think, recognized at least some consensus among many of us that the housing should be concentrated where the jobs are associated for those people. And the net effect of that is that we enhance the urban density of the voters in the county. At the same time, that makes the caucus system very, very important because it basically represent the input for the people that are out where the open space is, where the trails are being developed. They're obviously in use by everybody, but it could be extremely important for those voices to be heard, given that those of us that are in the rural valleys, and I'm up Capital Creek Valley, so I know, it's important that that voice be heard. And so, yes, the caucus system is very integral to how we're going to keep Picken County viable.
Do you have another minute, Bruce, if you need it?
That's good. Thank you.
All right, that's the end of the third round. Question number four, we'll start... It'll go back to the first one. We'll start up at Mike's end, come down to George, but the order will be different. Question number four. It's complicated, but I think it all works out. During the summer...
Is it Mike or to me?
This is to you, Shelley. You're first up. During the summer and winter seasons, Woody Creek has no Rafta bus service between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. During the off-seasons, there is no service at all. What would you do to help Woody Creek?
I don't know. I think it's completely wrong. I mean, everything we talk about is mass transit. How many times did mass transit come up as the answer to questions that weren't about mass transit? We want people to not drive. We want people... We want to be sustainable, we want a clean environment, yada, yada, yah. But we don't give large communities bus service. And, you know, I have... I'm not on the Rafta bus, I mean, on the Rafta board. I don't know why it is that this particular area has been short-changed. I do recall a long while ago that, when I was still a commissioner, insisting that as the Upper Valley pays the lion's share of the taxes for Rafta, that part of the deal would be that we would ensure these areas to have the tax. I don't know what has happened because years ago, in the contracts that were negotiated, where Picken County agreed to fund bus service all the way over the hump into the rifle area, part of the quid pro quo was that we would protect these Upper Valley routes. So at this point, I don't know why this has occurred. That was not, as I recall, the agreement. I don't know why it has changed, but it should not be this way.
Thanks, Shelley. Mike?
Yeah, I'm an alternate on the Rafta Board, and if I'm re-elected, I'll be on the Rafta Board next year. I think, to a large degree, it's just been a question of economics. You pick up more people on the highway, you pick up less people here. It's expensive. But I think there's probably a solution to it. I think that Rafta has to recognize that this is a community that needs that service, that wants that service, and should get that service. And so that's what I'll work for in the future. It's, you know, a lot of these decisions, a lot of decisions that the commissioners make are just about the bottom line, which is how much does it cost and can we afford it? And that's the same kind of decisions that Rafta makes. How much does it cost and can we afford it? Those are tough economic decisions. They're cold, and they're hard for communities to accept. But I, you know, I'll work for service in Woody Creek. Thanks very much for interrupting.
Which...
Next would be Bruce.
Right here, checking out the chess game.
You guys can actually take off the handle and pass it down.
Oh, we could. That'd probably be easier.
It kind of works, also, once it's here.
I don't know if we can learn a new trick.
Looking at Rafta as a whole, I think Michael put his finger on it in the sense that, you know, any of these boards are faced with, you know, a set of revenues and a set of goals they'd like to achieve. And frankly, I've not been directly involved, and so, to your specific question, as to whether there should be service here or not, I couldn't answer that directly. Does it make sense to make that service available to all those that would like it? That is a good goal. I have... I'm a big fan of Rafta, always have been. What some of you may know is that I don't drive due to an eye condition, and I think Rafta's wonderful. It's been essential to, you know, me to be able to move around the valley, and I know there are other people like me. I really like when George mentioned earlier that we've got to support the tax initiative for Rafta. You know, there's probably... There's probably never a good time for a tax increase, but that one, I think, is very, very important for everybody to seriously look at because that service does need to be supported and expanded, and then perhaps, you know, service in areas where, in your case, it has been before and was eliminated, or service in areas where it's never been can be initiated. Because the more people we get on the bus, the better we, you know, address the whole transportation thing up and down the valley. I understand Shelley is right in that the Upper Valley historically has been the strongest financial supporter of Rafta.
Ten seconds, Bruce.
The beauty is that regionalism is starting to take form, and we're getting some support from the other counties. I think we need to push for that and aim at a stronger bus system.
Jack.
Yeah, I think that's a very good question because we know historically, Woody Creek has had a lot of heartburn about not having service seasonally, more than just seasonally. And even when it has service, it doesn't have frequent enough service. The key here might be, because we can't go from what was occurred in the past but to the future, is if the transit tax passes, and I do not know the budget, I'm not a representative to Rafta, but it would be appropriate to have Woody Creek and the caucus compose a very strong letter to be brought to Rafta by multiple county commissioners and make that demand. I mean, it's, you know, you can make demands in a friendly and reasonable way, and I think that's what we'd have to do. If there is going to be a move from where we are today and where, you know, the history of the service is, that's... It's really, we're going to have to go particularly lobby in person as a board, and it might be time for more than just two of us to go down. I'll admit that, certainly.
It's your turn, George.
There's a couple of points here. First and foremost, I think we have to begin by supporting the RTD ballot. That's going to give us, it's going to give public transportation, an opportunity to expand their service, to provide more facilities, to look at outlying areas. Not only Woody Creek, but in our district, the Down Valley District, there's a need in Redstone. They don't have a van service either, and they certainly would like one as well. If you think about trying to drive from Redstone to Carbondale to pick up the bus in the wintertime, that's a really scary proposition. Secondly, I think we need to start thinking outside the box. We need to start thinking about perhaps having Rafta do a loan program for a van or dial the ride to get from a location like the Woody Creek store to the intercept lot. We have to determine... I'd want to look at the hours, where the ridership is going, and where the demand is, to try to determine how best to use our monies. You know, I have a degree in economics, and sort of the definition of economics is how do you use the scarce allocation of resources? Well, there is a scarce allocation of resources. How best to use that? I think we need to do some... I would do some surveys. I would try to determine the usage, where they're going, and look at some other opportunities as well. One other thing, as long as I'm...
You have some time?
It's interesting.
Twenty seconds.
Aspen to Snowmass has a free bus system, as is experiment. That's the same distance going from where I work at the ABCs to Basal. I ride the bus every single day. I think there's money that we could be utilizing on some of these other services to provide some vans, van services...
Thanks, George.
...by collecting some monies.
Perfect. Last round. It's going to start with the... Oh, I'm sorry, Dee, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off. My thousand apologies.
I'm all ready.
Take it away.
I have. I've been listening the whole thing.
Does it mean to steal your thunder?
So first of all, I, as commissioner, would lobby Rafta for increased bus service to Woody Creek at appropriate times and as the need is indicated, but not just to Woody Creek, also to all of the outlying areas. And yes, it's expensive, but that's only looking at the direct cost of what the bus costs. There's other costs, and there's other benefits to providing bus service to outlying areas. There's the cost of pollution. There's the cost of just using the roadway. There's the cost of water pollution from the runoff from the roads from excessive car use. So when we're looking at costs, we better look at the whole picture, not just at the individual cost of the bus, because actually, the costs are much greater when you keep so many cars on the road. So if we can reduce the cars on the road, we also have numerous benefits. So truly, a cost-benefit analysis better take into the equation the entire picture. As the cost of gasoline goes up, the desire to ride and use Rafta, I believe, also goes up. So what was true maybe 10 years ago, I don't think is necessarily true now. So it's time to start in rethinking these issues and make it a test. So strongly, I would lobby for increased bus service to outlying communities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dee, for correcting me.
You're welcome.
The last round, we'll start with Jack and Bruce. And the question is this. How do you stand on the two Picken County ballot tax questions? Number one, healthy rivers and streams and the road tax?
On the healthy rivers and streams, I absolutely support it. It's a very practical need. We face huge challenges from the eastern slope, transmountain diversions, water rights, and actually, an understanding of how much water is kept in this basin per agreements because the eastern slope has not lived up to their agreements. This is not only practical, but visionary. On the road question, I am actually neutral on the road question because I am very concerned in this environment, national environment, and actually, a shrinking economy locally about what's happening with access to dollars. And it seems like everywhere we go and every jurisdiction raises taxes, raises taxes. We're asked continually to raise taxes. It was Michael and Dorothea's opinion that, well, we should give the public this opportunity. There is a need, but is that need this year or is it in two years? We have a brochure that said 10 years. We have an engineering study that said seven years. So I don't think it's critical right now for the roads, but I'm really mostly educational, and I... Such is my answer.
Thanks, Jack. Bruce?
On the water issue, yes, it's absolutely essential that we preserve both the quantity and the quality of that water. And it's not just for us, it's for the people that come visit. And I think it was quite sensible to have that thing crafted in the manner it was as a sales tax because basically, the local residents and the people that spend money here are paying about half of it, and the visitors will be paying about half of it. And that's probably an equitable way to preserve that asset for Picken County for the future. On the roads, as I said earlier, you know, when is there ever a good time for a tax increase? What really caught my attention is a study saying that the average condition of roads in the county at this point is fair to poor, and that we've got damage occurring in roads that is starting to lead to degradation of the asset themselves in terms of the road base and so on. Perhaps a good analogy is you discover your roof is leaking, and it isn't a good time for you to replace the roof, and you decide not to do it. You incur two potential increases. One is that if you wait, the roof will cost you more to do. And number two, the damage from that leaking roof could manifest itself in other costs, structure of your house, whatever. Point being that the way we've got costs going here, we don't have a choice to increase the amount of money we spend on roads in Picken County. That's pretty simple.
Fifteen seconds.
So the question is, do you do it now or do you do it later? I think it costs all of us less if we do it now, and for that reason, I'm actually in favor of that measure.
Thanks, Bruce. Dee, you're up.
Boy, this is a dance, isn't it? I am strongly in favor of the healthy streams and rivers tax. We need to be able to protect the quantity of water in our streams. The Front Range is actively pursuing more water from the western slope. Keeping western water on the western slope for agriculture and for our communities is going to be a fight, and we need the dollars to be able to do that. And we can use those dollars potentially for purchasing back water rights when and if they become available. There was just a quote in the newspaper the other day about... From a fellow from a new western or Front Range Water Group. He said, "As drought and development becomes greater on the Front Range, we'll have to rethink allocating water on the western slope for wildlife." Well, that just gives me a heads up that this is serious. As far as the roads go, I think it's cheaper to maintain them in a serviceable condition than it is to let them deteriorate beyond that point. In addition, how these two tie together, 70% of our streams in the valley have roads next to them. So as a caveat, I would, as commissioner, like to see our roads maintained in a way that doesn't degrade the quality of our streams and rivers. We can do that. It doesn't take rocket science. It takes some will by the community, and it takes some allocation of funds.
Thirty seconds.
So I support both, and they oddly enough hang together because as we preserve the quantity of water, we can also preserve the quality of the water in the streams. Thank you.
There's a saying here in the West, whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting. Eighty percent of the water in Colorado comes from the western slope. Eighty percent of the population in Colorado is on the eastern slope. Right now, 37% of our water from the upper Roaring Fork watershed is diverted over to the eastern slope. The demand will continue to grow. We really need this tax, this dedicated funding. This is really visionary as well. I see it as what the county did in 1990 when they first established a dedicated tax for open space and trails. Look how great we were able to benefit from that wonderful program. Water is more crucial, and it's more important than we act now to pass this tax. Road and bridges, as I agree with Bruce, as he says... Road and bridges, as I agree with Bruce, as he said, you either pay now or you pay later. I was riding the bus the other day, and I got stuck a few miles before Smith Road, 8:00 in the morning, because there was yet another accident right at that dangerous intersection that I know all of you are very well aware of. We have very dangerous intersections. They're not going to be able to be solved or fixed without some dedicated funding. If the road and bridges tax is passed, there's the opportunity through bonding to start to do some of these capital projects that need to be done. Certainly in the rural areas, the roads are not getting maintained correctly, and it's become really a safety issue, certainly down in our neighborhood, and in some of the other neighborhoods in the rural areas. So it's a pay now, it's a pay later. The Band-Aid fix actually costs the county more.
Thank you, George. If we could pass the microphone down to the end of the table, it's Michael first, and Shelley gets the final say.
I support 1A and 1B, the 1A being the water tax. There's only two states of the Union that water generated within those states is their own. That's Colorado and Hawaii. This is a very, very special place, and we live at the headwaters. We live where those waters form, and we have to protect it. We've made some decisions in Picken County to control growth, to have smart growth, and I'm not going to pay for that by allowing other communities who haven't made those same wise decisions to take water to make, continue to make unwise decisions. The road and bridge tax is necessary. When my wife grew up here, Woody Creek Road was a dirt road, Main Street was a dirt road. They were converted by throwing some asphalt over the top, and then, over the years, a little more asphalt, a little more asphalt over that. These are all agricultural agrarian roads, really, and we've evolved from that into sort of a community that only uses cars. There were 70 trucks an hour on the Smith Hill Bridge when Snowmass was getting rid of its dirt. Those places need repair, upgrading to the time we live in now, not an agricultural use, which is what they're built for. So I think it's very important to support the road and bridge tax, and I plan to.
I agree with all the sentiments expressed regarding the water, because we are in grave danger of having our water grabbed. That said, this tax is well-intended, but is useless. The tax has two fundamental problems. The first one is it's a sales tax. I don't know if you all read the article where Snowmass said that they are not going to support the RFTA sales tax, because that will push Snowmass above 10% sales tax. If all of the sales taxes, including the RFTA and this particular one, are passed, you will look at just shy of 10% on your sales tax. You will pay that not only when you go to Aspen, but on your utility bills, your telephone bills, every time you go online. One of the reasons I am not supportive of this is I believe that RFTA is imperative that we expand that particular service. So why would I not support the water? Picken County has no legal standing in water quality and water quantity issues. What they're going to have to do with this money is to give it to a nonprofit to be their advocate, or they will bond to buy water. The problem is, is in the last 30 years, there has not been a million dollars' worth of senior water rights, which are the only ones that have any value during a drought. There's a lot of bogus, useless water rights on the market, but they won't service if we have a drought. I'll make it quick on the roads. The roads I would have totally have supported, because the intent, we've needed this money for years, the one mistake the commissioners did is they're taking of this money, they are taking out of the general fund that is currently going to roads, and I don't know the exact number, it's like 1.7, 1.5 million of it.
One nine.
One nine, thank you, Jack. And also increasing it another 3.5. What they should have done is held it at the 3.5 and not rated the general fund.
Thank you, Shelley. At this point, I'd like to offer a round of applause for all our candidates here. Great job. So, do you think we should open up to the floor?
Thank you for being a good audience.
If people have the inclination, maybe we could open it up to questions from the floor? Is that agreeable to everyone? And if there are any questions, just raise your hand and...
I'd just like to say thank you again, too. I wish the choice for each of you guys, you both, you all seem to have amazing ideas, and seem all really good. Wish the choice was not as easy as the presidential choice. Right now, it's very easy, but thank you all for your work. But there are a couple of questions I just want to go over. One of them is, I think the crux of the whole transportation issue is, you've got to hold the big corporations and the big hotels feet to the fire on affordable housing that they are putting within the boundaries of the areas, instead of letting them get by with saying, "I'm sorry, our employees would rather live down the alley." And you've got to encourage Aspen and Snowmass, particularly Snowmass, in that realm of getting affordable housing for people that don't want to even have cars, to not be so far away, and you don't need so many buses. And you've also got to encourage the Woody Creek people that want to live here, that don't have cars, they've built housing, they've built housing over by the railroad tracks, by W S J, but yet they have not put, get ski, or get the people who need these people to work, to contribute to the bus that comes into the Woody Creek, to our little bus to circle through here. That's what I would say. It's imperative that that's done before someone gets killed on the highway trying to come home from the bars at like 1:00, 2:00 at night, and feel, how did they get there? So Snowmass does a good job with that, Aspen does a good job to some extent, but as far as the bus thing, it's really important to get the bus, and particularly off-season, for like the full-time people that want to live in a little more rural area, and, you know, work in our stores full-time and stuffs.
Sherry, not to interrupt, can we interpret that as a question? Would anyone like to?
Yeah, I was just going to say who we want to...
Yeah, I'll address just an element of it, what the Board of County Commissioners is currently doing.
We'll give you a minute, Jack.
Takes some gumption, is that we've decided to, and we're finalizing some study work, et cetera, doing some graphs with an understanding of where we might be headed. We're going to mitigate housing at 100%, if in fact it passes, we've got a whole public process, et cetera. And this is important, even though there's not that much land left for commercial, per your consideration, Sherry, and Aspen and Snowmass, for example, you know, the big giant projects, these single-family homes out in the rural areas still require a lot of employees. And if we are going to build and face the challenge of building housing in the urban growth boundary, we may as well start having the development community pay for their fair share, because we've never had an impact fee or mitigation that actually was able to build housing, face the true cost of housing. So that's, in a nutshell, I kind of sifted through where you were headed. That's what we're doing.
Would anyone else on the candidates like to address that briefly, before we take another question?
Two things, one, I'm hoping that the city will back away from only having the large corporations coming in here. It really disturbs them, but that's another subject. The thing that they've been doing that's even more frightening is, the city has been allowing, and it started, doesn't matter when it started, the city has been allowing the mitigation to occur out at the Airport Business Center and at the Burlingame area, and fortunately, what they're doing is they're changing the commercial zoning to accommodate the affordable housing. And the lumber mill is one of the reasons I decided to run for office. They're purchasing the lumber, they've actually changed several zonings, and I don't know if you know it, but right now, we're losing our mechanics, Mike's transmission has to go, John Gunther has to go now, and because the Airport Business Center, the last commercial zoning that we have in the Upper Valley is being converted to be utilized for affordable housing. And I will not support that, and I think that's one of the things, if I'm elected, you guys, you gotta not let that happen anymore.
George? We'll try and keep this to a minute.
Sorry, George. Our crutch here, I think we could talk without it, but anyway.
This is only for the camera.
I agree with Jack totally. I think we need to establish some real impact fees for the development that's going on, and the impacts it has, again, on the environment, on the economics, on the social parts of our community. And we need to use that land use code as part of establishing what that impact fee should be. Obviously, it needs to be fair, but we need to establish it.
We have another question?
I kind of blew yours.
This is Biff, by the way, he lives here, so...
Getting back to the intersection up at the top of Smith White, it seems to me, although I'm not an engineer, that that situation was caused by a design flaw on the fire at CDOT. When they engineered the road, they didn't put a turnout lane, that was the first problem. In fact, one day while they were building that, I asked them why they weren't putting in a turnout lane, they said it cost too much. Okay? Since then, there have been at least a half a dozen accidents there, and I would say average every day, probably two or three more that could happen. Of course, we had one just the other day, there have been fatalities there. Has anybody from the Commissioner's Office, any of you who have been on the boards, on the board before, or involved in this, approached CDOT and asked them to put up the money to fix this problem, as opposed to making it a problem of getting money from a tax from the local residents? I mean, CDOT created the problem, why aren't they being asked to fix it?
Michael.
Biff.
Biff, you're going to have to move. Was it, let sleeping cats lie?
Yeah, I agree with you. You know, the Smith Hill intersection was really an engineering failure, a design failure on the part of CDOT, and clearly has cost lives, property damages, it's been a disaster. I don't think that they calculated, they thought that Woody Creek wasn't going to have to turn out onto the highway, apparently. They thought that the 70 trucks an hour weren't going to have to come to Woody Creek, they just didn't do their homework. Subsequently, the down-valley lanes have been improved somewhat with a turnout, and scheduled for next spring, it was actually scheduled for this fall, is an acceleration lane in the up-valley lanes.
That will also be dangerous.
Well, it's going to be, but the discussion was, within the caucus, what did you want there? Did you want a roundabout? Did you want a stoplight? Did you want an acceleration lane? And I think the caucus came to the decision that a roundabout wasn't practical, that stoplight was just going to add to really people's frustration.
Ten seconds, Mike.
About traveling on that highway, and that an acceleration lane, maybe not the best, was the only alternative, so...
Thanks. Anyone else?
I'll just, one aside, from what I'm reading, I think if we want CDOT to do anything, there won't be the money, is what I'm reading, so, you know, the good thing about having local government is, you can identify something that is pertinent to your neighborhood, and you can raise the money for it.
Why should we? That's my point. Why shouldn't we? They created a problem, why don't we put their feet to the fire and demand that they fix it?
From what I remember, I think we have to get...
The lives that are at stake, not some guy in Denver.
Well, it's for the same reason we did the roundabout, and then waited till they could fund, we loaned the money out, and we were refunded by CDOT later. I don't know, did you guys arrange that you'd get refunded on fixing this?
No, the state will not do that like they did with the roundabout and refund local monies put towards CDOT responsible projects. The state is in such sad shape as far as transportation monies, it's something like in the billion dollars a year, if we really got after what we need to do. And unfortunately, it sounds like an excuse, so, you know, from, it's a realistic excuse from CDOT's perspective, and that's why the Board of County Commissioners have put this on the list of projects to do. The option was also to put a light at that intersection, and we got a heck of a lot of public feedback about another light on 82.
That's the best solution.
It is.
So, the direction is, it's in the project.
That's it? That's it for this question? Another question?
I have a question on all these, I think there are three issues involving tax raises, all with a regressive system of collecting taxes there, and all in full support from everybody, with the exception of the two road issues, and I wonder, was there any discussion of other more progressive tax structures to fund these respective propositions or projects?
Anyone going to jump in on that? Jack?
Yeah, there was not, I mean, it was a basic, you had certain options allowed by the state. The tenth of a penny for water was as a result of new legislation that allowed a county to even exceed its, you know, that certain, that 2%. Unfortunately, the road issue is always, has always been looked at as a mill levy, and I'm, I've already spoke about that, I mean, I just have so much heartburn about taxes, taxes all the time, not denying the need in seven or 10 years. And RFTA, I would have to, Michael would have to weigh in on that, because he's more involved in, as our representative. Michael?
You know, the idea that there's some sort of progressive tax out there, I mean, quite frankly, we just don't have those choices, and we have a limited amount of options for us, and I agree, you know, the burden is going to fall hard on property owners, and the burden is going to fall on people who purchase goods, including their food, which is not progressive. But it is, if I could get it from the sky, or I could dig it up, I would try to get it from somewhere else.
But they are all funded by sales taxes, right?
No, they're not, there's, the road is a mill levy based on your property tax, and the sales tax, the water is on a sales tax. So those are all burdens that, I agree with you, they're tough to handle, but...
So mill levy is more progressive after all?
It really is.
It depends on how much property you own, but yeah. Exactly what it means. Sales tax, if somebody's just here two weekends out of the year or something and own a big piece of property, they're not spending that much sales tax. The road is still going up to their house.
I agree.
Bearing in mind that it also means that renters don't contribute to that particular tax.
Sure they do. In the record.
In the only way they take sales.
Yeah, it's usually passed through, it's tripled on that if you're doing a commercial lease. That's one of the reasons that through time, like for instance, I ended up voting against the, initially, the first time, the city's open space tax, because it was a sales tax. The reality is, the state legislature only allowed the RFT, the rapid transit could only be funded with sales tax, and I think that would be a task for the county commissioners to go back and have that changed, because the, I think the, I think the price to adequately fund transit using only the regressive sales tax will be too burdensome along the line. I mean, when RFTA was talking 198 million, that had to all come from sales tax, heaven forbid, the impact it would have on just regular people. So again, I think one of the next tasks for the commissioners would be to work with the state and get that enabling legislation changed to broaden the, to go to a mill levy if it was voted on by the voters, and not just sales taxes.
I should add one more comment about the taxes. Because of being a retailer, directly involved with sales tax, I can tell you that 10% is huge, but there's one thing that amazes me that nobody thinks about, about sales tax, is that there was an article in the paper years ago, and I wish I even cut it out, of how much money we lose because of people mailing out their items. It is phenomenal that tourists... It is phenomenal that tourists, technically, they are supposed to pay those taxes at home on their income tax. Do you think any one person even knows they're supposed to pay those taxes? They don't, and they don't pay it. Nobody does. It's a huge tax loophole. Some states have fought that because of their mail-order business, to where they charge taxes, you know, even if it's mailed out of state, right? So it, to me, if you guys would take some initiative, there is a lot of money to be gained. The tax, the whole sales tax could be reduced probably less than half, because especially on high-end items like jewelry, or furs, or heaven forbid, but, you know. But you know what I'm saying? A lot of very high items that people mail out, because they don't want to pay the tax. And the tax is never collected anywhere on it, and it's really against the law. It's totally ignored, and there's a tremendous amount of revenue that could be collected. We don't want to really mail these things out just to save people money. Why should we do, go to all that trouble to save them money? And yet, we live here, pay those taxes on everything.
Can I, in support of the sales tax for the water, and realizing that 10% is apparently kind of a cutoff?
Snowmass would be 12.
The proposition is, and this is very real, that our streams go dry, and the people that come here to go fishing, that come here to walk along the streams, the farmers that require that water, that those streams go dry and that water goes over to the front range, and that's a very real proposition. For somehow, I just, I don't know that that increase is going to weigh out. Do you want your streams going dry, or do you want, do you mind a little bit extra sales tax? It is to, also, there are many ways that we can use that tax to keep water in the stream. We don't have to buy water rights. We can lease them according to the new legislation with the 1085 rule. We can get water rights from down in Grand Junction, because that's what's keeping water in our streams right now, the Cameo Hall down there. And front ranges, interests are seeking that water so that they can divert water before it goes down the Roaring Fork, or before it goes down the Frinkin. There are plenty of places to get water so that we can keep it in our stream. That, we need, the earth needs a good attorney, right? And our streams need a good lawyer, and so that water, that lawyer can be paid with water, with money from that sales tax. So I guess it's a question, do you want water in your stream, or do you mind a little bit over 10%? And I think it's just as clear as that.
Well, I'm not saying, in fact, I probably would support the taxes, because I'm not one to say, you know, taxes are, you know, the big thing is low taxes. I would probably support the tax. I'm saying there's a lot of other places to get the money.
Absolutely.
And I'm saying that it's a shame that nobody in this valley or in the state has looked at that option. That's all I'm saying.
Sure.
Not that we don't need that. I'm a huge environmental person.
I just wanted to get my plug in there.
Just one quick comment, back to you. When I worked at the Aspen Chivalry Resource Association in its early years, we addressed that issue, and I spent some time at City Hall working with the, with their department and tribes, trying to find ways to collect those monies that were being mailed out. And I can't remember how successful we were, but there were some very good discussions going on at that time, back in the mid-'80s, for that same reason. I think you're right, I think we can continue to pursue that avenue as well.
There's a great article in the paper that listed the money that, like, tons of money that escaped with...
Especially, as you say, especially the high end.
And it hurts us. We can be paying 3% tax, 5% tax. It's sad, when I see it going out in my own store, you know.
Let's switch topics, things in life. First of all, I'd like to commend Bruce on not only responding to the questions very well in your platform, but being the only gentleman up there confident enough to rub it on a mustache. But my question is this, everybody responded very politically, saying that they want the affordable housing to be within the confines of the growth restrictions.
Except for me.
Except for you.
I'm politically correct.
But again, you responded very politically. Does anybody have any concrete and realistic ideas as to how to actually get that housing within those boundaries?
I mentioned one earlier when we were talking about locating stuff. I think, for instance, nobody would be against having incentives to get good teachers here. Clearly, housing is needed for that. You know, there's such a limited resource in terms of land in the Upper Valley, and that's why I think doing an initiative like getting the school system, the county and Rafta, RFTA, together to investigate whether, in fact, some of those non, you know, parking a whole lot of school buses on a huge parking lot, and having a big, if you've driven up there, I mean, you know, there's that huge garage, I don't know how many bays it is, but there's many acres. It's a limited resource for the school, too. I noticed to me, there was a representative in the school system that said we were way below what the average acreage is for, you know, a school system of that particular size. Well, land's expensive here, we've got to, you know, get together and think about how that actually does work. It looks to me like you could park the buses perhaps out where RFTA is now, someplace, you know, they can drive. Let's let the teachers walk to work. So I think it's through initiatives like that, but yeah, you put your finger on something that's tricky, because we're kind of running out of land that way. There's, but nobody wants, or few people want to see, you know, going up and so on. I mean, the density, there's only so many ways you can get that density. Thank you, Bruce. Yeah, I believe that approaching or dealing with the challenge of affordable housing is doable within the urban growth boundary, and we have to understand there are multiple urban growth boundaries, and we're one valley. Passault, Carbondale has their own urban growth boundaries. We have identified some land, and I'm not going to mention any names, because you don't do that when you're about to negotiate, et cetera. But there is some land still left that would be completely viable, that a previous board looked at, meaning not my current one, but previous. There are multiple sites that can be redeveloped. When we met with the school district, for example, I clearly stated that I support the urban growth boundary, and we're not going to, as a concept, because I can't prejudice myself for an application before us, but as a concept, I didn't agree with putting housing, more housing out here at the existing school site. But I said, well, how about the parking lot? Gee, that's, what are we, just encouraging people to drive at, to the school? Now, that's not the solution, but in response, the hospital board said, well, we are looking at many options, and including what Bruce mentioned concerning the bus barn, as it were. I mean, we have to be innovative, and I believe that we can approach this and get things done by cooperation, but it's, you can't stand alone as Picken County, and we have $8 million right now for housing. But what is that really going to build in this environment? We need to work with others and collaborate. I believe between the hospital and the school and Picken County, we can actually come up with housing, and I absolutely agree with something mentioned earlier by Shelley, that we can't only build for-sale housing. We need rental housing, too, and it's a defined need, the housing board recognizes it, and it, you know, we're a community of many needs. That need is not currently being met. So I don't want to, you know, take all the space here and time.
This is how tough the paradigm change is that we're going to have to do, and it's going to require a paradigm change of the way we look at a lot of things in the community. I was on the P&amp;Z when we did think about moving those bus barns and putting housing there. The problem was, we couldn't find anyone who would accept buses next to them. You're all reading it right now. Already, the people who live at Burlingame are saying they don't want any increase in development next to them. And that's a conversation that this community has to start having as a heart-to-heart. The ideal location would be Mrs. Moore's property at the, over by Buttermilk across from the ski area. But I can't tell you how many of my friends say, "Oh, but I don't want to see houses there." And what we're going to have to decide is where can we tolerate seeing a house, and what will exchange for a house versus having someone there to shovel our roof, or whatever it is that we need? And it's going to be a hard conversation, because we are going to have to let go of notions that I know I have held on to for 35 years, and it's going to be hard. But I think we can do it, and I think we can do it in a manner that lets us keep this, the absolutely drop-dead gorgeous place it is, and still have another generation here. We need to figure out how to build a sustainable community.
On that, on that note, even though we never officially brought the caucus meeting to order, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Is it seconded? All in favor? Say aye. If you have further questions, pigeonhole our candidates and...
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
And the bar's open.